Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the July 21st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room. And now join me as we salute the American flag.
... from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, on behalf of the board, I'd like to wish our colleague Ms. Weiser happy birthday tonight.
(applause) Thank you.
A little song or something?
No, but it's...
A little jingle?
If you'd like to do some tap dancing, we would love to see that.
I gave that up.
He tap dances.
My shoes don't, you know, fit me anymore.
It's just nice that we have someone, instead of celebrating her birthday, is joining us on the planning board dais tonight. The first item on the agenda is carriage trails, also known as Crofton muse. Applicants are here for an extension of the site plan deadlines to complete construction. They get a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mean as your extensions, motion carries. Mr. Kaufman?
Good evening. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Lou Kaufman for the applicant. We have been trying to address some of the comments that we've received to our preliminary submission, and certain threshold questions were arising about vested zoning and the bridge and the street and all that. So we wanted some guidance from the board, and we had asked for a meeting because it was hard for us to even get started with all of the, you know, the revised plans. I mean, we have the layouts, but, you know, there's certain information that is contained on these, you know, on the plans themselves. And so we had asked for a meeting, and the chairman is gracious enough to set something up. At this point, it looks like the people that'll attend, the earliest is next Friday, which is okay. And we'll be ready, and we'll have our team there to kind of go over some of the issues, which I could list, but let's not, let's not waste that time of the board tonight. However, based on, you know, just my simple math, I'm thinking, all right, so next Friday, and then the deadline for the August meeting is the Tuesday after that. And we have not been that fast to begin with. So to assume we would assemble everything by, in a day and a half, and then have it printed is unrealistic. So whereas initially we were talking about August, that's, that's not going to happen. We want to have something intelligent that you guys can chew over and has some of the things that you can consider. So then I was thinking, okay, so the September meeting, but apparently the September meeting is, there's only September 1. So there's not a whole lot of leeway there because September, the 3rd September, I'll be busy, as I understand, as Ann will be as well.
No?
Oh, okay.
Stephanie?
All right, whatever. Okay, yeah. Attoning for my sins certainly, and I have a few more to add after my issues with the board. So anyway, so realistically, in order for me to have an intelligent and full application that then can be torn apart, I, I think October, as much as I have a tendency to say, oh my God, what are you doing to me? I realize that October is the realistic date. So if the board would see its way clear to adjourning this to October, hopefully I'll have something intelligent for them to review.
Would you like the first meeting in October or the second?
What's the, I guess, the second Wednesday?
Third Wednesday, first and third Wednesday. Sixth or the 20th?
The 5th or the 20th?
Sixth.
Sixth or the 20th? And when would you have to have it into the 6th?
Probably 15 days or so ahead.
So like September?
No, September.
I, I would like to think we would have our act together before then, so yeah, I would take that.
Any other comments from the consultants or the board? So we're tentatively scheduling this for Friday, I believe, next week. I just haven't seen the time yet. So, but I'll make sure we reserve one of the two rooms. You want to meet this in person, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. We'll be up there. And, you know, and I'll have the planner, and I'll have my attorney, and I'll have the engineer. But truthfully, it's about these special questions that Brian Morgan had raised, so, you know, you and Victoria and whomever else you feel will come, that would, that'll be great.
Thank you.
Is that going to be a legal issue meeting, or?
It's mostly legal issues, I think.
But the bridge is part of the discussion as well. Do you want to be part of it?
Okay.
That seems wise, unprudent.
Are we doing virtual or in person?
In person, but you can always phone in virtual. You can phone in if you'd like.
Okay. If we could do it, I mean, I'm sorry, but if we could do it in the morning, I'm not going to be around in the afternoon next Friday. Did we have a time?
I think Stephanie, Stephanie?
I think I was the problem.
Is only free the afternoon.
Well, then I guess I can call in.
Okay.
Did you need planning there, or just engineering and legal for now?
I, I think legal and planning is probably the issues we're going to address. Let me just give you an idea of what they are, okay? So some of the issues we would like to at least get an idea about would be, of course, the, the bridge or the COVID improvements over Cromelbo Creek and design and environmental context, the project density and the vested rights, which I, you know, Mr. Morgan raised in a memo, which he sent to Victoria, and I don't know if it's been shared or not, but, you know, he's brought out some points that I hope will convince the board that maybe we have valid points. And after, if in fact, the bridge, if, if, if the town is amenable to us rehabilitating the bridge, the next question is, all right, well, do you still want the road? Or do you want us to, you know, do you want to have it as a private road with all the easements for the water line and all that stuff within it? So I think that the, the bridge, which is a critical issue, and then out of necessity, you have to decide about the road. Then, you know, we seem to have bonding issues, which you had mentioned. I don't know how we bond anything without knowing what it is we're bonding, and it has always been discussed that it was at a building permit that seems to have shifted, so I want to talk about that. And, and just, scheduling for the, for you guys, but, you know, going through that, if I, if we can get some solid, I'm going to, I'm going to give you our application after we discuss it. And either I'm going to get blown out of the water, or you're going to consider it. So, but I did want to, you know, I wanted to get some threshold things got done, and I'm hopefully, next week will give me some guidance.
Just a reminder that in terms of the offer of session and the road being private or public, school buses will not go down private roads. I think that someone from your side said, oh no, that they change those, those procedures and policies all the time. They haven't changed them in 17 years.
Right. True. I, I, you know, that's one of the problems.
I'm just making sure.
No, I understand, and that is one of the problems. And I would, I'm amenable to Crofton Boulevard, meaning, you know, Crofton Boulevard. I'm not so sure Mr. Satero or you guys are that thrilled with that concept, because if it's a public road, he's been very clear that they don't, they want a new span bridge. And, and that's a basic economic problem that has killed this project a few times. And we want to make it work, but we have to be realistic about what we can do. The cost of the bridge comparably with what they've been putting in over the last few years is above $2 million now, similar bridges, span bridges. We can rehabilitate that, but I don't even want to get into the engineering, and I will leave that to the engineers.
And just to remind the board, so that, the reason why this is such a big sort of nut to crack is because the bridge would have to be built and be operational before you could pull the building permit. So, you're spending a lot, that, as, as Louis said, this has killed the project before, because you're spending a lot of money that you get no return off of initially. Bonnie, you want to add something?
Yeah, well, so I just wanted to ask sort of the status of any discussions with DEC. And I'm newer to this project, but I thought part of this had a lot to do with DEC's requirements as, you know, as part of the seeker process. So I was curious if they've expressed anything to you.
I've been told that the DEC is, of course, a primary decider in this case. However, one of the problems that I'm having is, how do I go to the DEC until the lead agency has at least said, well, we would find this acceptable, lead agency being the planning board? So it's, I have to, someone has to make that move. So if the planning board is saying, well, if you can get those permits, we'll be good with it, that, that's an understanding. But if, if I had to go get those permits faced, I'm not even going to get through the door. They're going to say, well, what's the lead agency say? So I think we can convince DEC that what we're planning will not disrupt the place environmentally and will be of sufficient structural strength. That's me talking now. That's what I'm reading. Whether I can convince the people that make the decisions, that'll be up to my bridge expert. So I, you know, I, I've gotten a report. They say it can be done. They're going to align things, they're going to, you know, structurally, you know, create the head walls will be, you know, reinforced. We'll put the water line within the bed of that road, which would create a water line right away. We would have to protect it from cold, obviously, can be done. So all of the issues are there. The Board of Health has said, well, can you get it done? Because we would love to have, you know, you'll open up Hyde Park, you know, that side to a great degree, and you will salvage failing, you know, significant amount of homes there. So they're willing to work with us, they'll bring people to the table, but I have to have you people say, well, you, you, you're going in the direction that if you can get that done, we're okay. So we have to find out.
And for pretty much everybody except for Ann and I, most of the people up here are new to this project as well. So what Mr. Kaufman is referring to now is that there was a sort of informal agreement, I guess I'll call it, between the town and the prior project sponsors to bring the water line that's been brought in already. So the water line that they have comes from the water line on Route 9, it goes up and then down Hudson.
Hudson, right.
They brought it down, brought it, oh, east, I'm sorry. And the agreement was that they were going to bring it all the way to 9G. And I, Pete, I think, I never can remember the name of it. Is it Dutchess Estates?
Dutchess Estates, yeah.
Yeah, so they have a water quality and quantity problem at times for their district, and that was sort of, I mean, you're getting it up to the street, that's all. The rest would have to be done by DCWA or somebody else. So that is, that does help solve a problem for some of our residents as well, you're correct.
And, you know, no lesser of a important person than Lee Felsham has said, I will help with this, because they very much want to, you know, solve that problem. That's a big problem for the community, and, you know, so now they're talking the community itself, saying, well, maybe we'll dig another well. They want no part of that. They want, they want Dutchess County Water and Wastewater to be the operator. And this way, they're ensuring all of that investment from the tower all the way in that easement, which was a fortune, up Crofton Boulevard, which is in place, which we're going to test to make sure the line is still working. So there's a lot of investment already. It's, it's still money, it's still plenty of money to get it out there, but we can do that if, if I can, the tough part of this would obviously be with the permitting. It won't be the construction if it goes according to what we think we can do. So we can cure that problem, and, you know, obviously, we want to because it's an incentive to, to the permitting place, the divisions, to go with us.
So I think I'll try to invite Superintendent Fisher as well, our highway superintendent. So again, just weigh in.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I mean, if I could just comment, and, you know, I know this is not, this is not what you want to hear, but, you know, I have talked to Howie, and, you know, he is, he is not in favor of taking over a road that's got those multiple, like, culverts on it. And pretty much, pretty much what he says, you know, goes. I mean, and I have to, like, agree with him. I mean, it's, it's just, it's just like a maintenance headache to have those three, like, culverts there. They clog up. You know, the DEC, if there was something that was proposed like today, they would never, you know, allow it because, because it is, you know, like, a clogging issue, and they don't, like, allow multiple, like, culverts on their, on their, on their stream crossings anymore. So, I mean, I know it's, I know it's an expensive, like, number. I don't, personally, I don't think it's, you know, the $2 million number, but it is, it is, you know, most, most definitely an expensive item. And so, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'll be glad to, like, participate on, like, a call next week, but I, I mean, I can tell you what, I can tell you what the answer's going to be from our end of things. It's going to be no. So, I mean, I don't know how to say it any other way. And I'm not trying to be rude or mean about it, it's just, you know, it's like a maintenance issue. And if it's a town road?
I think things change a little bit.
If it's a town road, he wants the open?
If we're there operating, at this point, 250 units or close to it, whatever, we have, you know, we have maintenance staff, we, you know, we run a pretty decent project. So it's a little different than I, some, but something that's been vacant than a moonscape for years with just the moos lodge to, you know, expect some protection. So I would suggest that we would probably do a better job of maintaining those culverts, but, you know, there's a, you know, and, and so we would, it would be a private bridge, but, you know, I don't know how else to say it. At this point, it doesn't add up.
Well, if it's private, if it's private, I mean, that's, and I don't know how, I mean, that's a whole nother, like, story, but if it, but if it's, if it's, like, proposed to become a town road, which at, at this point and prior, you know, it was, that that's the reason why the town wanted the open, you know, span, because we don't want to have to maintain three culverts and, you know, they, they clog.
And I, and we have a certain, we have some hoops to jump through with DEC because they're of the mindset that an open span bridge is, you know, better for the flow of water. I mean, let's not get ourselves. So the question is, is will our bridge experts convince them that this bridge is an acceptable, you know, with the revisions that we are going to suggest, you know, smooth on the bottoms and things like that? Will that work? And if DEC will accept it? Because we're not coming up with any other answers right now, because all of the comparable stuff that we're seeing, the last one put in was similar size, it was 2.7 million. So I don't know how, that doesn't add up for us. So I don't know how we're going to do it. So, you know, it's a, it's a big problem, you know? We, we, we got a decent, you know, price from the bank, and now I know why, you know? And then when, when we told you we were going to buy it, you know, you guys looked at us like, really? So I'm sure you were grateful that we would give it a good old college try, but it's, no, it's, it's real sad.
I was all very clearly telling you that what had caused the project to sputter was the bridge.
Yes.
And that it was DEC requirement, that it was open span, so yes.
Yeah.
And I certainly understand what Pete's saying. We've had, isn't this where we had the beaver damming up issues as well? Yes, everyone's nodding. So this is, keeping the stream clear and running is, is not so easy in this area, so. Yes, Bonnie?
So if Pete is suggesting, or not even suggesting, is saying that the town will not accept the road unless it's open span, if, then you need to pursue a private road based on the design you would like, does it make sense, again, do they really just need to go to DEC first?
I would think so. I would think so.
Yeah, and I, I think they'll communicate with you in as much as the, the planning board may be lead agency, because they're doing a lot of the permitting itself for that stream and, you know, they have the concerns with ecology, et cetera, but, you know, I think the town, I think the planning board would want to hear from DEC.
Lou, who are you talking to over at the DEC? Do you know?
There was a, a group of people, it was Sarah Paulusak, and there was a couple others who I can't recall. Sarah was the communicator.
Rebecca and Chris, was she involved?
Maybe so, yeah.
I mean, and I don't, and I don't remember, I don't remember back, back when whether it was more of a DEC requirement to make it an open span, or if it was, you know, the town's, the town's requirement.
See, I'm not seeing about the DEC, but I, I trust your recollection.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 you know, I tend to think it was more of a town requirement, that if it was going to be a town road, that we wanted it to be an open span. I, I don't remember. I don't think that the DEC required it, but...
Right. I think the DEC was more worried about the turtles, you know, frankly. So I think we'll cure the turtles. The question is, will we cure the, the road department problem? So we'll see. You know, I, I know we'd be willing, you know, well, first of all, we have to ensure that the bridge is structurally appropriate. So, okay, fine. So let's say we do that, you know? So now, is it environmentally acceptable? So it's, it's very easy to say, well, we prefer this to that. But right now, it's nothing, you know? And so we'll see. I, I think I have, you know, someone who will present a very sound engineering solution, and I hope that I'm right about that, you know? So it's not something to be discussed tonight. I would, I certainly will be giving you a bridge report and the solution to that with this application, because that's a critical issue. And I'll be giving you a set of drawings, and I'll be giving you, you know, there's a few things that are just, you can check off the boxes. So, but in order to do all that and give you guys at least a moderately full report, you know, I have some homework to do. So, you know, I said, asking you for some more time.
So is October 6 the enough time? Should we reconsider October 20th to join us to October 20?
You know, I, I've been here a few times, and, you know, I'm always hurry, hurry, hurry. In this case, I don't care, October 6th, October 20th, I need the time. I, you know, so if you want to do the 20th, you will not hear me say, what?
I'm just trying to give you...
Right, not this time, right.
And if that's, if the 6th is sufficient, or the 20th is better?
We'll be celebrating my birthday that night.
Oh, definitely.
Nice.
Sam, may I get a motion, may I get a motion to adjourn this to October 20th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Lou, we'll speak next Friday?
Yes.
Just, I think it was between 1:30 and 3:00, that you were free, 1:30 or 3:30, Bonnie?
Yeah, 1:30 on, 1:30, yeah. I think that's what you said.
Okay. And Lou, I'm going to speak to the DEC and see what's, where their heads are in advance, because I know all those people as well. Okay, yep?
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience over there.
I don't have a bridge.
Yeah, you're like the rest of us up here. You've become a land use junkie, I can tell.
Exactly.
Yep. So the next item on the agenda is a workshop. This is Camp Victory Lake's master plan and Phase 1, which is a large sanctuary slash church. As a reminder, there's going to be a lot of, there's a lot of programming that occurs right now on the site. This is located on the north side of Cromelbo and to the west of North Quaker. There's already a lot of activities. They're conducted in tents and a variety of places. This will give them a central location in which to hold, so it's not as though it's an increase to the number of people who are there constantly. We're waiting on some updated traffic analysis, and otherwise, you've submitted what to me look like very nice revised plans. So I'll turn it over to you.
Awesome. Thanks for the introduction, Chairman Dupree, planning board members, consultants, hi. Peter Sander from Runia, here to provide you guys another update for the Camp Victory Lake religious sanctuary. So we've been working with the architect, and he decided, he's trimmed down his design, kind of reduced the footprint of the building, but we were able to expand the number of seats. And that's just kind of how the seating arrangement prior to this submission, it was more set up like a U, whereas now it's more kind of linear seating, similar to auditorium seating or something like that. So to just give you some of the highlights of the updated plan is smaller building footprint, reduced from 56,000 to 47,000. We've moved the building further east, so it's, because of the reduced building footprint, it's actually given us more space in this area and more setback from North Quaker, or North Quaker Road. We've also added three lanes rather than the two. So now we have a drop-off lane, a travel lane, and a bus queuing lane. I knew that was a concern, where the buses were going to queue up, so we've addressed that. In addition, we've also shown widening of the road as requested to get us back to that bus parking towards the existing wastewater treatment plant. Also, to update you guys, we've made ZBA submission. I've been assured that this footprint is the one we're going to be sticking with from the architects. So we decided that's a good start to go ahead and begin working on that height variance. The zoning, zoning department also said that we would need a stream corridor encroachment variance for Victory Lake and Fall Kill Creek, which is all part of the stream corridor requiring the 100-foot setback. So because of the tight space that we're working in, we're going to encroach on that setback. The closest portion of the site is this little corner right here, which is around 26 feet away from Victory Lake. So that's going to be, we're requesting that variance. And so really, this discussion tonight is kind of gauge your guys' thoughts on the new building layout. We want to move forward with a full redesign, or a full, fully fleshed out design with landscaping plan, lighting plan, and all of that stuff, but we wanted to get your guys' feedback on this first, and then we can move ahead with that.
And you're going to hear that tonight, I promise.
Perfect.
Let me start with our, are you done?
Yeah, I'm good.
Ms. Franson, comments? We just got your memo today. It's printed up for us, too.
So many of mine are more technical in nature that can be straightened out as part of the detailing of the site plan. But I did want to mention that, especially with regard to parking, because you have more seats, you have to redo your parking calc.
Correct.
And on the version of the plan that I saw, the overall parking calculation had dropped off, so it wasn't actually showing that you had the parking available. So I think you need to just make sure that, you know, turns back on. Ultimately, as the board goes through seeker, you should discuss to what extent you need any visual analysis of the building and its current configuration and massing. You know, as this progresses, I'm sure the, the board would like to probably see more of the architectural detail in terms of materials, et cetera. Again, I just had minor comments. Now that things have been adjusted, it looked like, you know, there's a retaining wall to the south of the sanctuary. It's kind of between that one-story, or sorry, that, uh, single family or that, that house structure. And I didn't know, I didn't see on the plans that you'd provided if it's served by septic and if you're, where the septic is relative to some of the grading that's happening. And also whether, depending on the retaining walls and the drop, whether any kind of fence would be prudent between the house and where the grading is happening by that parking lot for the sanctuary. Again, a lot of it's just details on the mechanical enclosure. The applicant has requested several waivers in terms of where the parking is relative to the building line that you'll need to discuss at some point. There's still some, you know, remnant notes that appear, and I don't know if they're going to come off, or if there's something that's not shown, like a particular stormwater pond. And I had a general question about whether, in fact, you do need to do any kind of grading by the cabins because of the slope that's there and because they're being relocated. I don't know, you know, sort of how you would do that, or, or if you don't need any kind of grading there. And we had had some comments on your EAF from a seeker perspective, and you have made a new submission to update the seeker form, which at some point will need to be done. But I know you're kind of going through this and still finessing the sanctuary layout, so those are the primary comments. Again, a lot of it's just detail.
Thank you. And just for everyone to recall, I believe that we sort of discussed the parking that's proposed to be closer to North Quaker Lane, and that if I recall, everyone seemed to be fine with it there. Now there would be a little bit of a discussion about the parking that's now to the south side of the sanctuary, so it's also in front of the building. As I recall, I believe, at least at our agenda meeting, everyone liked the idea of using church personnel or handicap, whatever, along in that area. So you're probably going to hear that tonight. And we're not really waiving the requirements. The language in the code is relaxing the standards, because we're allowed to relax any of the standards if there's a practical reason to do so. And in this case, if I recall correctly from my notes, because I was just looking at them, everyone liked the idea of putting, that you're putting landscaping, you're leaving some of the existing trees and shrubs along Quaker, and you're adding more, so that would help soften, that's why they agreed to, or more or less verbally agreed to, relax the standard. There. Mrs. Satero, comments?
I didn't really take too hard of a look, because, again, it was more just like a concept, and there'll have to be more engineering details, and, you know, as Peter said, they're going to make a full submission, but just a couple, couple... going to make a full submission, but just a couple, couple things, looking at the plan One, actually Bonnie made a good comment about the relocated cabins and any, any grading behind that because that would be part of your variance, because you need 100-foot setback from the lake also as part of, right?
Yes, it's not disturbance, yeah.
Yeah, so you're going to have to look at that, and that ought to have to be part of your, you know, your variance application, whatever area you're going to be grading into within that 100-foot. And then, uh, just curious, have you, have you talked to the county public works department yet about, about the access points because, you know, because you are keeping the existing single, single-story framehouse, and then you're also proposing to keep the existing access that's right next to that, like driveway for, I believe you guys had talked about that was going to be for access to the mechanical equipment?
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to access, now that we have the access lane that was requested.
Okay, that's, I was, that was going to be, that was going to be my, my, okay.
Yeah, it won't be there anymore, so that's going to be.
All right, good, get rid of it.
Gone.
Nice, gone, okay. All right, so then it's not a big deal. So I mean, we, I don't really have anything, you know, at this point, we'll wait till there's, you know, more detailed plans and.
Ms. Moss?
I had just already contacted the applicant about the additional stream corridor variances that, that needed to be added to the application, and they're taking care of that.
And is this something that you think that the ZBA will refer to us for comment?
Eventually, but the zoning board might look at it right now, but they're not going to be able to proceed until seeker's done.
Correct.
So I expect that it would just be an initial discussion, and then you'll have to come back before this board to, to go through the seeker process.
Any other comments, Ms. Podora?
No.
Let me start to my left, the birthday girl, Ms. Weiser.
So I think the building's looking really great. It's, you know, become quite charming. And I think, oh.
What?
I think the building is looking very good, it's become quite charming. I look forward to hearing the answers to Bonnie's questions, especially as it pertains to parking. And how will traffic be managed during large events? She did ask if there'll be a parking lot attendant, will there, how do we keep from like traffic jamming?
Right. So the, the camp employee staff, which will then monitor, for most of the large events, will then direct people to which, which parking area they should be going, where they should be dropping people off, so that's all going to be outlined by the staff and discussed with when the events are occurring.
Thank you, and I believe Ms. Franson also suggested early on that they have some kind of event management plan for the larger events.
I was just going to go say that if I could, that, that could be, again, I don't, have you guys talked to the county yet about, about the project and the traffic report and submitted that?
Not too much, we just need to, we wanted to rope down where everything was going before really diving deep into those kind of correspondence.
Because, you know, like you will submit the traffic report to them, and, you know, they very well may, may talk about the event like management plan and then, you know, because I've done, I've done like a couple, couple of them, and, you know, anybody that's out on the county road, obviously directing traffic has got to be a specific, I think you may even have to hire, like the sheriff's department possibly for it, you know, so, but again, that's all going to be part of the details, but, you know, you will probably need, need somebody out there depending on the, you know, the, you know, the quantity of folks that you.
Yeah, size of the van and all of that.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Yes, like what you've done in the changes, I like the idea of staggering the walls along Quaker Lane, so it's not one flat face, now it's.
Yeah, breaks it up a little better.
Right. And so now just looking forward to seeing the, you know, finalizing the architectural details, plantings and renderings and whatever.
Okay.
I believe we all forgot one important thing to mention out loud, there's no huge tall cross anymore proposed on top of the building.
That's right, we did cut the apparent building height way down, so yeah, the large cupola and the cross, which would have brought it up to over 100 feet, has all been axed. That's actually at the camp's request, too, because they, they want a more modest design for that, so.
Excellent. Ms. Walter?
Yes, thanks. Much improved design, thank you. I like the changes. I just want to confirm, it's my recollection, you're defining a large event as how many people? What is your typical maximum? I want to say you once said 3,000 people or more.
Our max event was assessed at 5,000, that's typically how much. So I've been toying around with developing different levels of events with small event, medium event, large and extra-large, so it would address how different, how to manage those different numbers. So then again, now we'll go into the large event management plan and will be pretty well addressed.
And certainly affecting all the parking layout and design, so I wish you good luck. I'd like to see an application.
All right.
Ms. Dexter?
I concur with all of my colleagues' comments, and I feel like we are getting closer to a much more practical plan. I did have a question, though, when you, we don't normally, we wouldn't have calculated the height with the cross, correct?
No, we don't.
It was, it's not included in the building height, but we would look at it from the visual impact.
Right, so I mean, I just wanted to, that the actual cross does not get added to the, the cupola does.
For the variance purpose.
Right. So I think the cupola is actually exempt as well, correct? But being the size of the building, what actually pertains as a cupola being, because it's going to be much bigger, it's not like just a shed cupola, it would be a, a large part of the structure, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that my recollection of our code was, was, was still, still there, but yes, absolutely, a much tighter plan, and I, I really like the comments about thinking in terms of the flow and queuing and just overall management. I do know you have large gatherings there on a regular basis and have been for years, so I would just expect that that would continue and just become more robust.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. DeNapoli?
Thank you. I think you can go back and report that tonight's meeting went well.
It sounds like it, I like all the comments, nothing's too, too critical, I like it.
I concur with my colleagues, it is a tighter plan, it is much improved with making it smaller, but I do have a question, I think it's more for my chairman and/or the consultants.
Pass the way.
My concern is parking on the grass. Take this year when it's been extremely rainy, and you're parking, how does that destroy the grass? What can be done to ensure that it gets restored? Is that even, is that even viable to say, well, write it in the resolution that it has to be restored at the end of the season? I mean, I mean, I don't think that's real.
Well, don't they make the, the grass pavers? We used, we've looked at that for various things, so that when you look at it and maintain it, it looks like there's regular grass, but there's actual structure underneath there that allows parking.
But I don't think they're proposing that, are you?
So, we're not actually proposing that currently, it's just a, a large expense for such an infrequent use of the, the grass parking areas.
But aren't you guys also concerned about a rainy year like this?
Of course.
So what are your thoughts?
My, all my thoughts have to be in writing, but my personal thinking is that.
Too shit.
It's just so infrequent that the level of these large events, so the, really, the, the primary parking areas will be able to handle much of the smaller events, so, but again, your concern is for larger events.
Right.
I don't have a great answer for that now, other than just the infrequency of it, and that the camp itself, I keep forgetting to talk in the microphone, my bad, the camp itself is going to want its campus looking nice and not want to see it rutted and torn up, so I think it's, its own kind of self-preservation of the existing facilities, that they would then try to return the grass to normal if, in the event of a large rainstorm, caused rutting or loss of grass.
Yeah, we could, we can, we can put something on, on the plan to that effect, and, but I think, but I think I might have the answer for you. If it, if, if the ground is wet, you could always have all the, all the two-wheel-drive cars park in the parking lot, and the four-wheel-drive cars could park in the grass.
All right. There we go, Jeep Wranglers in the grass.
There you go.
It was more like it dawned on me today, this thing's such a rainy season. I absolutely agree, I think the, the church itself would want it to be maintained, they always have, so I don't worry about it, but it was more of a thought.
But it's foresight, you know?
Ms. Franson?
I was going to say, I mean, for those of us who've been up to Bethel Woods with the concerts, those tend to be weekly during the summer, and it's all on grass, and I don't think they have any kind of pavers or anything down, so I think it's a combination of probably the soil that's there, the grass, and how robust it is, but if I recall correctly, Bethel Woods, they may have put like hay or straw down after an event, especially if it was, got a little muddy or something, but definitely, I think if it's something that, you know, you're going to rely on a, on a regular basis, that parking area, then that should be part of the plan for, for maintenance.
I do want to just toss in here real quickly, that turf is tough and comes back, that's why you don't have to water it during a drought, it will come back, for the most part, but the concern is appropriate for you to raise because of what Peter just said, rutting. It's really wet and you start destroying the actual, the, the flatness of the land, and it's not going to come back unless it's maintained, so, but just as a reminder also, all landscaping almost is supposed to be well-maintained, there's a note always on the plans about that, but we don't typically usually get into the grass.
Grass.
But that was a very good, that was a good comment, and this is overflow parking, if I'm correct, right?
Correct, yeah, so we'll, again, so I'm just thinking off the fly as where we will then, in our large event management plan, designate the least susceptible areas for the most overflow, so we'll phase it, so this parking lot will fill up, then the next parking lot will fill up subsequently for the least likely to get affected by a large storm event or something, something like that.
And trust me, no one on this board can ever accuse me of being parking obsessed. Until now.
So I believe what you've basically heard tonight is nothing but nice things. I agree with all my colleagues, I think the building does look nice. It looks sort of like an Adirondack lodge to me now as opposed to just a sanctuary.
That's what I was thinking, I was like, wow.
When I first saw it, I was like, this doesn't look, it doesn't signal sort of church anymore, but it's, it's a multi-use building, which makes sense that it doesn't necessarily just convey church look all the time, so, at any rate, because there are other things besides services there. And I also, I have to say, I, the reason why I brought it up is I personally think it's nicer not to have that, that really huge tall cross, it was really, really, really high, you could have probably seen it from lots of different locations, and I think that between the lowering of the height of the building and then not having the cross, I think it's going to nestle in more effectively. I also liked, let's see if I can turn this on.
I actually have.
I like the little round, the, you've got a little round pool of water, I think next to the entrance now. Whoops!
You know how it is. So I have these, or are you looking for more of the building elevations?
It's just, I was going to refer to, you have a little round, where you're, where the, I can't see that far, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Where the entrance is the drop-off, you now have a little bit of like a, a round thing of, I think, stormwater?
Yeah, we're, what we were going to do was a, a stormwater planter, so it'd kind of be a, a good congregation area for everyone coming out, but also provides a benefit.
Now, when I looked at it, I thought, that's a nice little addition there, and it neatly solves an engineering issue, plus it's very attractive, and I think, because people love to stand around water elements.
Yeah, water elements, just places to sit, greenery, so I, I personally like that, that feature as well.
So the other thing, before we leave this topic, is the, what kind of visual analysis we want, because no one's really weighed in on that. And Bonnie, do you have any suggestions or thoughts?
I, I think if you want to start simple, just getting a sense of what vantage points it could be visible from, let's say residences, and maybe doing a cross-section.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and then if you do a cross-section and showing what landscaping you're going to be putting in, that could be for, sort of a first pass, and if it seems like it's reasonable, then they don't have to go into, you know, more detail as far as photosimulations or things of that nature. But if there are any particular vantage points that the planning board would like to be evaluated, maybe in another week.
I think we'd be mostly looking at the residential houses that are both to the east and also to the south. The south, I don't think is, is worrisome because it's set down deep, but we should at least see something from that direction, I think. Peter?
Yeah, and I think, I think some of the houses there, because we had, we had an application at one point, you know, a while back, for a subdivision on the east side, right, right across somewhere, and I, if I remember right, I think those houses are set back pretty far, but.
They are.
But again, that's something like to look at, and what about anything, if anybody's heading south, or, I'm sorry, heading west on Chromeelbo, coming down, coming down to the traffic light? I don't think they're going to, I think there's a lot of trees there before, that you'd really only see it.
There are, that's how I come in from the city.
They really only see it once you would get to the intersection almost, so.
That's really it.
And then you got, you know, Victory Lake on the other side, so there's, there's really not a lot of, but.
But yeah, maybe some cross-sections, just like Bonnie said, you know, to start out just.
Yeah, maybe start out with an aerial, you know, showing where the proposed sanctuary is, and then what's kind of around, and that'll first give everyone a sense of how close buildings are to the proposed building, and then from there, selecting from which locations to do the cross-sections.
So how do, sorry, do you mind repeating? How do you want it set up, aerial? I've got, right in my notes?
Well, I'm just suggesting to start out with an aerial that is within a certain distance, maybe, I don't know, 2,500 feet out around from the sanctuary, you know, let's say a half-mile or a quarter-mile, and then, you know, you can see the buildings on the aerial, and I think from there maybe you can then select cross-sections because you'll see the buildings and from, you know, from what it's visible. I don't know that the board's going to be concerned if it's visible from a commercial building, and I don't even know that there really are commercial buildings out there.
There's a residential care facility?
Yeah.
It's just.
So I think it's really the single family.
I was going to say, it'll actually improve their view.
Exactly, yeah.
But it, it's also, that's somewhat tall, so that's also what's making me, I've always, I believe, said that the height here doesn't really bother me so much because you already have a tall building there as well.
Yeah.
I believe it's actually taller, because that, that one's about three stories, where this one's kind of two built in the side.
It's a full three stories, that one, so, and it's kind of located higher up as well at one point, so, but I just want to make sure that we were giving you as much guidance as we could tonight, so that's what we'll start with for the visual analysis.
Perfect.
And then if you, when you can, I believe with the traffic impact study, what we asked you to do was go back and just get some ITE numbers, because you were relying on numbers given you do by the applicant, and we wanted to sort of have a comparison with what the ITE would say for it, and that's basically it.
Right, so I, I've been corresponding with the traffic consultant, we have a whole draft-up response to all the traffic issues. I'll kind of leave it to, I'm going to, I'm going to say that's not my expertise, so I'll leave it to him, but we did take some issue with the IET numbers, just because of the multi, multiple uses of the camp. It doesn't really fit into any one category, so he describes it way better than me in his responses, but.
You can still provide them and then explain why you don't think they're appropriate.
And I believe that's what he kind of tried to do, is break it down into the multi-uses, but it was a little difficult to provide some general I, or numbers for, for, based on that, so.
It's, it's almost like it's an amusement park over there in some ways, I know what he's, what he's getting at, so because there's so many different uses on it ultimately. But again, this is just to make sure that we have an adequate idea if there's any mitigation required, that we are able to.
No, not yet.
Force mitigation.
You're planning different group sizes, and maybe you could have those numbers.
Right.
In other words, I'd like to conclude seeker so we can get you going, that's why I'm bringing this up tonight, so.
No, anything else, feel free.
Well, I want to suggest, I mean, you know, I asked before about, you know, the county public works department, I mean, our office had reviewed, you know, the traffic impact, impact study before, and we'll take a look at it like again, but, you know, the ultimate, you know, like deciders are going to be, you know, the county public works department, so, I mean, I think as soon as you have the traffic impact study, like updated.
Get that sent out.
Yeah, I mean, I would get, I would get like in front of them as soon as, as soon as possible because, you know, they're backed up as you probably like know from.
We completely understand.
So I mean, you know, you know, we can have some comments, you know, like from C- So I mean, you know, you know, we can have some comments, you know, like from CPL, but they're really going to be the ultimate, you know, like deciders. Decision-makers, deciders, whatever.
And just, just to remind everyone, DCDPW took a little over seven months to finally approve the entrance and exit for Dollar General at Dorsey. And that's what helped cause it expire, because we'd already given it's, all the, all the extensions we could, plus 244 days of tolling. They weren't proceeding further, because they were trying to wait on that. And that's what caused us to also have to redo the resolution because of the change in the sidewalk, et cetera. So we know it's taking a long time. That's why, again, I'm bringing this up, because I'd like to see this at least get approved before I retire from this board.
Me too.
At any rate, but, well, we'll get there, I promise. At any rate, any other questions or comments from anybody? Yes, Ted?
A long time ago, there was a project for a China Buddhist temple on the street. And DPW, they had buses coming up from the city. I don't know where your buses are coming from, or whether they're all coming at the same time. But there were improvements to the road that were going to be required for that project.
If I recall correctly, the improvements included something with the wetland across the, across the road, Crum Elbow?
The sewer treatment plant was going across the road.
That's it.
But there were turn lanes that had to be constructed within the county road.
Was that project ever formally withdrawn?
Oh.
Yes.
Because I do remember it now, both of us do. That really is a long time ago. It's probably a good 15, 16 years. And I believe the subdivision you're referring to, Peter, was Joe Kurchhoff's son. The entrance would be off Quaker in our town, but then the density, he had a density issue because it was in town of Clinton, which is, doesn't give you a lot of density. I think that was it.
Could be.
Unless, before my time, before 17 years.
So whatever, whatever that you say, I'm good with. Because I don't remember.
It's, his, his access point is off Quaker, so it's in our town. That's the reason why. At any rate, then, Mr. Sanders, good to see you again. I love your enthusiasm for the project and the project itself. As I said, I think it's at the last meeting, I was asked to give an update on, to the town board about projects, and I included this one. And it's one that, at first, they were like, oh, no one's going to be interested in. When they saw it, they were like, wait, whoa, that's pretty exciting. Because it is. It's a large piece of land. It's been designed, I think, sensitively. The other issue before we conclude is that it's important for the board to remember that the reason why we have the 100 feet on the other side of the center line of the stream corridor is, the way it's written in the code, because it's in the definitions, it's to allow the free movement of animals. So, and if I recall correctly, this was designed pretty sensitively, so that you have kind of the ecological corridor up to the northwest section that's, I'm being, I've been disturbed.
Northeast.
Northeast, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, so we actually, the building was initially proposed to be located in the northeastern corner. But after some initial turtle studies, they found that it is a potential landing turtle habitat. So we were like, we don't want to go there. So we moved it down to this southeastern corner of the, the site. And then in our master plan, we have that more as a conservation area, where we do not want any future development to kind of preserve that habitat. So, yeah, we are very, we actually mentioned this in, in our variants, is that by providing that, we are kind of leaving that an area for the migration of, or threatened endangered species, and just species in general, so.
Right, and that, that's, the, the corridor for movement is actually for all species. It can be raccoons, deer, you name it, not just the ETR species. But I just want to point that out for the record, that you did design it. You redid the design initially, drawing some things out of the area you thought were the most important to conserve ecologically, environmentally. So, anyway, then you can go back to your big boss and say, you heard nothing but good things. And we'll wait to hear back from you.
Very cool. Thank you again. I, it's really good to see you guys all in person again.
I know.
It's been so long.
It's been a while, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have a change in a resolution approving the Hyde Park Town Center. This would be the relocation of a playground area in the rear. There's now, as discussed last time, we now have a composite fence rather than wood. And we also had to make some changes based on swift calculations on 18 versus 12 feet of leaf compost. 12 inches, whoops, versus 18 inches of leaf compost. Yes, thank you. At any rate, anybody have any questions? Then I believe Ms. Wiser, birthday girl, will be introducing this resolution tonight.
Just call me BG. Resolution to amend the conditions of site plan approval, Hyde Park Town Center Plaza, July 21, 2021, resolution number 2020-15G. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby amends conditions six C of resolution number 2020-15C to replace 18 inches of leaf compost with 12 inches of leaf compost. Yet further resolved that the planning board hereby amends condition four of resolution number 2020-15F to replace wood stockade fence with wood stockade or composite fence. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say, oh, yes, question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
I'm still raising my hand.
I did the same thing just now.
Me too.
I just did it too. It's because we did a year and a half of Zoom meetings where that was the easiest way I could see was raising your hand. So at any rate, we have, thanks to Cynthia's Herculean efforts, we have six sets of full minutes to adopt tonight.
Some of them were marathon.
Oh, my God.
They were very marathon. So may I get a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes of April 4th, April 21st, May 19th, and June 16th?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I did it again, aye. Sorry, motion carries. And may I get a motion to accept the minutes from May 5th? Diane and Ann will be recused from voting on this. They weren't present.
Am I make the motion?
Yes. And thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a motion to approve the planning board minutes for June 2nd. And this and Mr. Pickett and Ms. Wasser were absent.
I suggest you just hold one hand down with the other hand.
I'll set out mine.
So moved, all hold hands.
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It worked. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if there's no other business, I just have a quick question for Ms. Polidoro.
That's so fast.
This, I think, is an easy one, but it's also sort of a question to the board. So we've discussed hiring an economist or someone to review the Camoin Report for Bellfield. And we got suggestions from Ms. Franson and Ms. Polidoro. If all seven of us want to do the interview, then we'll need to publicly notice the meeting and then just go into executive session. That would be the only thing on the agenda, and then come out of executive session, back here again.
Correct.
The only other option would be if a subset of the board, like three, wanted to do an interview in Zoom, as opposed to having to meet in person.
Correct.
So how would the?
I mean, a third option is you could just have a meeting and invite them during the day.
Probably.
Probably no one would show up.
But, but it would need to be noticed, but it's all seven of us, no matter what.
Yes, it would need to be noticed.
And some of us do work still. And I'd like the vice chair present, because she's been there since day one on this project.
Right. I was just saying, you don't have to go into an executive session. You could, you could interview publicly, or you can go into an executive session.
Oh, that's true. That's true. I'm so used to personnel issues being done behind closed doors, but you're right, it could be done publicly. So.
I mean, if you have specific project questions, it may make sense to ask them in an executive session.
I think so. So what would the board, do you guys want to all interview these two, the two groups?
Yes.
Can I say, wait, yes? Red's saying no.
I'd like listen in.
Diane says yes. So yes, there'll be, there's going to be at least five of us who want to be participating in this. So I'll contact both groups and then I'll see if we can have them maybe, let me take a look at the agenda for the next meeting. If it's not too crowded, maybe we can put them on.
Did both companies get back to you?
I haven't contacted them yet. I wanted to hear what the board wanted me to do first. Because if it was just going to be like a small group, then I would just say, let's just go ahead and do it fast. But at this point, we'll, we'll invite them to a regular meeting.
I mean, it may be that. I don't know RES Group's schedule right now, so it may be an easy decision if one of them can't participate.
I know it says no, I can't.
Whether it's available or not, so. But if there's any issues, let me know, and I'll come up with some other names.
Ah, this is already for our next agenda. Thank you. So it looks light. If we can get it up, we have an extension for River Ridge. We're back to leasing family properties, assuming they're going to be submitting new materials.
I don't think.
That's public hearing, what am I saying? Yes. And then we've got Falk Hill Road, the Highbury Estate. And we are going to workshop Dollar General, just so, again, for everyone's reminder, Dollar General expired.
Right, yeah.
So they're submitting, resubmitting an application. I believe the town board has told them they can request only paying 50% of the regular fees, because most of the review has been done already. So we should be fine. So I'll see if they can make it to the next meeting.
It's going to be the same.
It's going, it better be exactly the same, or there'll be new reviews starting, because that's new information.
I have a question, actually, on Dollar General, is that, I think they made some changes, Cynthia?
They submitted.
We think, we think to the plans, maybe, a couple of.
I think they've updated for conditions of the things they may have meant.
So, so, you know, my question is, would you want Liz to do a very, very quick, like once-over on these plans?
We have to have, we have to have a comparison, yes.
Because it's not really fair to try to get like Bonnie involved in it all, any background.
No, 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 this is perfect. This is exactly what Liz should do, because she's familiar with the project, how lengthy that review was.
Yeah, a quick, a quick, like, once-over.
Side-by-side comparison.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely.
Thank you, yes.
We warned them that was coming.
We did warn them of this. And Peter, thank you for meeting with the Department of Health on this topic.
Yeah. Well, I just, I wanted, we wanted, we wanted to clarify it, just because, you know, I didn't want to feel like I was like the bad guy in making the interpretation that they didn't really have Health Department approval. And that was confirmed by the Health Department that they really didn't have Health Department.
It was very clear that it's not really an approval. They haven't submitted anything to approve.
Right, I, I understand.
They haven't designed the system yet, because they haven't done a drill.
Drill, right.
Who was on the phone with you, besides Ms. Maginowski?
Karen, obviously the Health Department, and a gentleman and a woman that I did not know.
Their, what is their project?
I believe they were part of the construction, they, they were part of, part of the construction team, but I believe they had some like ownership in the project too, some way, somehow, because they were, you know, nervous about, you know, the timeframes and wintertime and.
They both work for Hicks, Neidicker, in the Development Department.
Yeah, so.
Ms. Moss?
They spoke to the Building Department about the demo permit, and the construction manager doesn't think he can get his water test results back until sometime in September or October. So they're not expecting Health Department approval until October, like October 6th or something. So there's time.
They're not going to get it by October.
This then lets them sort of reset the clock, because, again, as I pointed out, we gave them 244 tolling days on top of the normal six months they have in which to complete, and then the two 90-day extensions. So, but I'm thanking Peter, because it's, my patience was being sorely tested when we had our last meeting with the applicants, because they were so upset and somewhat rude. I'll leave it at that.
They were just freaking out. Well, they made statements that this is not how it's done anywhere else in the county, and that's just untrue.
They're like, but we always, we get building permits with these. I'm like, no, you don't. That, that's building code, you can't.
Well, well, and, you know, as, you know, as I said like today, because that, and I was nice about it, that was my first, that was my first time, you know, talking to any, to anybody on their side. I said, look, you know, nothing for nothing, but it, it, it should be obvious to anybody that got this Health Department letter, that this was not an approval. And the letter was dated May of 2020. We could have had the discussion we're having today, like, a year ago. And the, and to make the assumption that you thought the town would issue building permits to demo the building, and the, and you could go ahead and start like the new building while, you know, the well's being drilled. And I said, I, I don't know of that happening anywhere. So, but here we are, and we are where we are, and you'll just have to move ahead. And they were like, okay, we get it.
Remember Stephanie was the developer herself in Massachusetts. I'm sure it was the same thing there too. You have to have this.
It was certainly the same thing, and I'm sure, not to excuse anyone's rudeness, but I can tell you, if that had happened to me, I'd be losing my mind. And there'd be people above me who had spent all the money also losing their minds. So I think that, it was, it was a big boo-boo. And I think they realized there was no way for them to fix it. They just had to start again. But that, that was, that's a shocker.
Well, I mean.
That it happened that way.
We're here, and they'll just have to go move ahead.
They, they accepted it, and when I said they were rude.
And they own it, they own, you know, the property.
That's right. When I said that they were somewhat rude, what it was is they were, they were casting aspersions on someone's professional reputation, which I don't think is appropriate.
Oh.
I'm sorry, but I don't.
They know about that.
And Victoria and Ted and I had to defend, and I just didn't like doing that for a while, because.
That's inappropriate.
And maybe also, I think they probably said the same things about us behind our backs.
Oh, I'm sure.
At any rate, speaking of big boo-boo, you all aware of what's going on with Jeffrey Groves Estates too? That's something.
Yes.
What's?
We got an email today from Attorney Raplansky, saying that he talked to the Division of Real Property Services.
And this is public information.
And it's, they can't reverse it. So it's been abandoned.
Well, well.
It can be.
We, they are working on trying to reverse it.
How, how can you, how can you reverse it?
That's for them to argue.
Ted is doing her shaking her head for Dr. Doom behind you, so she doesn't see that.
They're going to come back just for a subdivision approval.
I mean, there's all sorts of, of issues, because the zoning has changed since they reversed their subdivision, so.
Victoria and I.
And they were under construction.
Victoria and I were racking our brains, trying to figure out a way to help them. But it's really difficult, because this is a unilateral action, that they didn't tell anybody of the talent they were doing. So.
Any of the houses.
Some kind of a deep thinker.
No, no, no.
No, no, but the land looked already.
Yeah, they were, they're still doing land clearing, so.
The wastewater treatment plant is under construction. They were getting ready to begin the waterline extension from wherever it is up to their property on North Cross. And the townhomes on the other road by the lake, that area is being graded and prepared for the townhomes. But I don't know that, if they don't have the other density, I don't know how they can make it work financially.
Now there's only 12 townhouses, I think, over there, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they, they dissolved the lots for all the others that they had. But they, and I am correct.
This is what a restoration bond is for.
Yeah, well, we better get ready.
Restoration.
Bond, so it can restore the land to its natural pristine shape.
Or at least spread something on it.
So it was just, it is just the one lot that, that they did this on. It's not, or I shouldn't say one lot, but the lot that had, one with the road. Because the road's gone too.
The road is gone too, which, the county, I don't understand, they dissolved the whole road, which had already been offered to the town.
Right. So.
You know, Lincoln is the one who said, any person who represents themselves as a client is a fool.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, they understand the gravity of their situation right now.
A lot of people I work with in development, they are lawyers, but we hire lawyers.
For a reason.
It's their job. Yes, that's their sole job, is to review the entitlements.
Yeah. Ann has things to get through.
Oh, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's the BG.
So moved, yeah, that is me, right?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
I have a question for you.